You're gonna burn it if it touches the ground. You're gonna burn it if it touches the ground.
Proclamation?
This is the flag of the United States of America and is a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the City Hall official flag that I brought down. Just want to let you know. Okay, on your desk, Alderman, are the minutes of last month. And we have some -- we have the committee reports. And some correspondence. First is from the Hudson American Legion Post inviting Alderman to parade on Memorial Day on Monday, May 27th. Full details are in the letter. If you have questions, the contact information is there. The first resolution is for commissioners of deeds. And seems to include Supervisor Mia. Do I have an introduction in a second? Shoshah and Tiffany.
May I just ask, just for the sake of the public, if you can just let them know where the location and so forth for the parade, Memorial Parade?
Okay. Let's see. It begins at 10:15 at the Veterans Monument in Seventh Street Park. And then it'll be marching down Warren Street and of course, Fourth Street to the courthouse where the services are held.
Thank you.
So it's Shoshah and Tiffany, first of the motion. Second resolution approves the 2018 firefighter listing pursuant to the service award program. You might recall that in the past, we, the council, set up a retirement, a modest retirement fund for our firemen. And this is just to approve those submitted by the Commissioner Hutchins this year. Any questions? Do I have an introduction in a second? The next, as you can see, is a long and interesting resolution that I suggest you read before our next meeting, if you haven't read it already. And it's to enter into agreement with New York State Department of Transportation for maintenance of the Empire State Trail. They of course are constructing the trail in portions of the city of Hudson. And once it is completed, they're asking us to own and maintain it. Now, my understanding is that mostly what we're maintaining is street markings, linings of the street, and not much else really. I mean, there might be a bike stand, and I don't think there's much else that we'll be responsible for. But I suggest we all read this before we approve it next week. Do I have an introduction in a second, or is there more conversation?
Yes. Rob had said most of this, they cover anyway.
Right.
We talked about that. So there may be a little more work to maintain it for a bike or a walking path, but not incrementally anything significant, so.
Maybe mowing some lawns. Dewan, introduce. Do I have a second? The next resolution is adopting the Climate Smart Community pledge. This has gone through a number of committees, I believe. I know the Conservation Advisory Commission looked at this and was hoping we would do And it's one of these things, actually, I think Rich had something to do with also. And is it a case where if we approve it, it opens up source of the?
Right, it's one of the many different checkboxes to go through the New York State Climate Smart Communities. You first take the pledge. Neighboring communities have also taken this pledge. And then as we go through these checkboxes, it opens us up for grants and other types of funding.
The 10 elements are in the resolution. Build a Climate Smart Community, inventory emissions, set goals and plan for climate action, decrease energy use, shift to clean renewable energy, use climate smart materials management, implement climate smart land use, enhance community resilience to climate change to support a green innovation economy, inform and inspire the public, and engage in evolving process of climate action. Do I have an introduction in a second? Calvin? Second? The next resolution comes back to us. It's a resolution authorizing the sale of real property located at 427 Warren Street at a public auction, not as a sealed bid, to the highest bidder. That's the main change. There was one other, I believe.
We'll give them three years.
We're gonna give them three years instead of two to come up with their design and to begin their project.
Question?
Yes.
Will this be the only property in the auction?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? The police, yeah, I shouldn't mention, the former police department. An introduction in a second. This next resolution also comes with a lengthy explanation. It is a resolution, and this was submitted by the mayor's office. It's a resolution adopting the New York State sexual harassment policy for the city of Hudson. So this resolution, I believe, Andy, is sort of the recommended resolution that comes with the New York State policy.
Exactly, and behind it is the model policy from the state of New York, just saying that the city's going to follow that.
And again, you know, it'd be useful to read it before we actually vote fully on it next meeting. Any other, hold on a second, the council. Any questions from the council?
Yeah. Andy, this is the new law that goes into effect as of October 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there council questions? Yes.
Just to say briefly, I'm Don Moore, and I've been tasked by the mayor's office to head this up. This is a really thorough process. It's a thorough policy, but it's also a thorough process, which is to say every employee, including members of the council, will need to sign that they have read and been trained in this process, understanding what sexual harassment is and how it's defined, the process of filing complaints, if you wish. Very strict rules about, against retaliation, which has been a problem with these, with sexual harassment cases. And a fairly thorough process by which a supervisor or the mayor in this case could go through examining any complaint, whether it's written or whether it's, or whether it comes in verbally. And I'm perfectly happy to talk more about it if you want, but it does, I appreciate the council taking it up now because between now and October 1st, every employee needs to be trained, and it will be, it will be a fairly lengthy process, so, thank you.
We'll start with training.
Pardon?
We'll start with training.
It will be either, probably, it will be either the supervisor of a particular department, or it could be someone from the council, or it could be myself. I'm going to be the point person on understanding the training. There's something called training the trainers. But it's more, it is, it is more likely that, and actually more appropriate for department heads or others to take up the training responsibility.
You might consider asking our insurance provider, because that's one of the things they offer for free.
Well, they offer it, yes, we are. Nymer is the person, we're working with, there is a program that I will go to that they offer, but it does need to be brought back for video and PowerPoint meetings and presentations of the standards.
Yes.
I'm not, no. The county also does this program with the shared services program. I'm sure Mr. Moore knows that he can probably partner with them, if not, just to have them there for backup information. But I will say, this is a good first step to add into labor issues that should be addressed in a full policy, so hopefully we're looking at other labor issues, because unfortunately, small municipalities tend to look past them until they actually have a problem at hand. So I think this is a good first step.
Introduction in a second? Oh, Tiffany?
Who's second?
Calvin. The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for the installation of three electric car charging stations. As members of the Economic Development Committee know, this has been an ongoing topic. They've researched thoroughly, Rich Vola being the point person, and they've come up with their selection at their last meeting, and that's where we stand. Is there anything else, Rich?
No, this is a really good opportunity for the city because now there are these grants that are available, which won't be available even probably, you know, three to six months from now, where we will get three electric car charging stations with two ports per station, and it will all be funded with grants. We're getting a grant from NYSERTA for the actual stations. We're getting a grant from National Grid for the digging and for the work that will be done. They will be behind City Hall, and once connected, they get connected to the electric car charging grid, so that people know that they're there. Also, similar to the Village of Lake George, we'll be charging, the city of Hudson will be charging $1.75 an hour, so people will charge. So not only will these charging stations be fully funded, they will actually bring revenue into the city as well.
An introduction in a second? Rob and Dewan. The next resolution is to accept a donation on behalf of the Hudson Fire Department, a donation in the amount of $100 from the Eyes of Life. Oh, I'm sorry. It's from the Hudson, New York Benjamin Morrell Little League, Inc., for the Eyes of Life. Whereas the city of Hudson, and also, okay, I don't know why, oh, I see. And then there's also an Eyes of Life fund that has $5.56 in it. So combined, we are getting a donation to the fire department of $105.56. Calvin? Second? The next resolution authorizes the funding of telephone cable and internet for the senior center. This, I think, should probably go to finance before we go further with it, but that doesn't mean we can't introduce it here, right? Does that happen now? We can introduce it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's $2,000 to provide telephone cable and internet for the senior center. Any questions?
Is this a bill for the year? I'm sorry.
Let's see.
This is like, it looks like last year, the 2018 city budget.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It must not have been in that budget, and now the bill has to be paid.
You're right, it's a bill to be paid.
Yeah.
So is this time sensitive? Should we just?
Well, the finances before the regular meetings have. An introduction in a second? These two will have to go before finance. I haven't seen this previously. I guess it was submitted by Rob. It's a budget amendment to the 2019 extreme winter recovery paid New York and CHIPS appropriation. Whereas the DOT, Department of Transportation, has finalized the appropriation for extreme weather recovery paid New York and CHIPS appropriation for 2019 with respective new balances. Therefore, the city treasurer's authorized direct and directed form of budget adjustment for the following expenses in respective revenue accounts in the 2019 budget. So this is just moving, CHIPS money coming in and going out. Any questions?
Since it'll go to finance, maybe I'll look with Rob and see if he can understand a little better.
Thank you.
Looks like all good news.
Right, exactly.
I think the last DPW meeting that was concerned that we might use more than the salt we got at the state price.
Right. Introduction in a second? Second? Calvin?
I was pointing to Rob.
Oh. Much harder than this, okay. Now here, it's the substance of tonight's meeting. A new local law amending the city zoning code with regard to off-street parking requirements in the city of Hudson. This law, of course, has gone through the legal committee, but it will have more discussion. But it addresses an ongoing concern from both the planning board, the zoning board, and the citizens of Hudson about our requirements for off-street parking spaces. And at the recommendation of the legal committee, basically, we're saying that we should just remove what's in the code and replace it with the ability, with no law, no requirement. Thinking being, among certain planners, that if any business, especially in the business district, that if they plan to open a restaurant, it would be in their interest to make sure they have places for people to park. If they don't, it'd be a pretty bad business decision. So we don't need this kind of oppressive code requirement that is really inappropriate for a very walkable city. So this will have to go through a lot more than just tonight, but this gets it started. Eileen.
And when I saw this, I thought maybe this could link to a request for a budget item for next year to have parking spaces painted even where there are no parking meters, like what was done around the Armory. And I think that might help with people who are trying to find parking around here. I think people want to park between the lines. Mostly, there are no lines unless you're on Warren Street, so.
And there are.
I'm gonna see if I can find a way to tie this and get Johnny through.
And also get some money for meters where they're missing.
Yeah.
Because there are some cuts that really shouldn't be cuts anymore.
Right, right.
You know, that it become non-special spaces.
Yep, yep.
There are definitely things we can be doing, at least on Warren Street, and I believe also on Park. So, to get this started, do I have an introduction? Sure.
So this law will be enacted throughout the city?
Yes.
Not just in certain areas?
Yes.
Okay. That was one question.
Any other questions?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
What is the current law that's being struck? How, what is it required?
It's going to have to do with the number of parking spaces required, depending on the zone. But mainly, in the commercial zone, I believe it's three spaces for every seat in a restaurant. No, three seats for, three seats to one space. Yeah, three seats to one space. So it's really oppressive. Yes?
This, when a project comes before planning, parking could still be.
Exactly.
An issue. For instance, if a new project like the Wick Hotel came to Hudson with 50 rooms, the planning board could deny it based on a lack of off-street parking, so that they still have the power.
Right, right, absolutely. Billy?
So I, I'm glad you guys are having this conversation, because as we're looking in the city to expand our business though, this law is extremely onerous, and I know it has stifled business already, so for us as a city to look, you know, look out and to plan forward, this would be a really good step. So I'm glad you guys are having this conversation.
Yes, and as far, you know, we're trying to have a larger conversation about planning and zoning, but this is something that we could do right away, and that's why we're doing it. More questions or an introduction in a second? Dewan? Second? John. Okay, reminder that tomorrow, is it tomorrow night? Wednesday night at the library at 7 o'clock is the speech by Allie Church. For those of you who are wondering, you know, this whole, as I said, the whole planning and zoning discussion, because our task force was never meant to be like, say, the housing task force to come up with an actual deliverable. But fortunately, Peter Spear has started his future Hudson at the same time, and these have really converged. We have a lot of exciting things happening. James Howard Consular will be speaking here in May, and we have a number of other really interesting people lined up to come and talk to us and help us think about how we're gonna plan and zone for the future. Is there any the council would like to bring up?
I think we need to address language about the tourism board, because people brought it up at our legal committee meeting in terms of the scope of the current law. So it probably will is to have a conversation about it if we want to have.
Did I send you the draft? I can't remember.
Well, I mean, we should talk about it before.
Right, no, oh, that's right. Andy has provided a draft which will go to legal, and then we'll take it from there.
Well, we could get a sense of what the general council thinks.
Yeah, I will do that. And, yeah, I mean, I, we could start now, or you want to wait till we actually put it through legal first, or?
I mean, if anyone on the council wants to speak about it, we should, otherwise we could just do it in committee.
Speak on it now?
Yeah.
Well, the amended law as crafted by Andy at the recommendation of me and John, I guess mainly, but I'm sure many of you will probably agree, is that we're gonna, what the fund has up till now, obviously, we can't change, although we can maybe deny if they want to expend it a certain way. But the amended law will send it to a designated fund within the general fund to be expended at the pleasure of the council, the way any other money is spent in the city.
So like, I'm sorry, contingency, which is, you know, that kind of a place?
Yeah.
Usually, the budget notes will say what was anticipated to come up with the total.
Right. Which isn't to say that an existing tourism board couldn't get some of that money if they had a good proposal. But rather than just designate it, you know, ahead of time, this seems the smarter planning.
Does it have to go through the state, the assembly?
The law, amended law?
Yeah, the modification right now will not. Our enabling legislation allows us to modify it. We are quickly, though, going to be presenting a renewal request to the state legislature.
Three years.
So it would be really important for the council now to talk about this and decide, you know, with an eye toward what you want that law to be for the next three years, essentially two and a half years.
When does that sunset, Andy?
In 2020.
2020.
In the first part of 2020.
Okay.
No, I think it's even earlier than that. My expectation would be that if the council in the next two months decided what they wanted to do, if anything, with this current lodging tax local law, once that was adopted, we would start moving, because the state moves kind of slowly, and look to try to get that on the governor's desk. Typically, that's signed at the end of the year. So we look to do that so that we don't have any problem. It does happen from time to time. I don't know if any of you see, saw in the paper, but just this past year, there was an issue with timing with Green County, and they lost their county portion of the mortgage tax for a period of time.
That's right.
So that was a significant loss of funding. So it's important that we make sure we know what we want to have, and then we'll immediately start that process with the state. Ultimately, it's in their hands, but we want to make sure we give it to them with six months or more to spare, so they can't say it's our failure.
And of course, in this conversation, there'll be a public hearing required, so there'll be plenty of opportunity for those who think we should designate the funds the way they are, if they're.
We could certainly take it up in legal. It would come back next month to the council, you know, if you were in agreement on it, then obviously, it'd still be, it would be laid on everyone's desk for a month anyway for further input, and then you'd have a public hearing. But the concern, I guess it's been discussed, is just, okay, what's going to be the best way to do this, and is it efficient and productive to keyhole those funds, you know, in any fashion for a particular use, as opposed to requiring the treasurer to report the amount that's coming in every quarter, and having those funds placed in a designated account so that they can be utilized during the budget process? So that's, that's going to be the issue that the legal committee would take up, and then eventually, everyone here.
Well, Rich and I talked about this a little bit. The most consistent feedback that I hear in the fifth ward and other places, but in the fifth ward is, people are concerned that the Flag Day Parade isn't going to be funded, you know, as well, not because of this law, but I think they're hoping maybe the, some of the funds could be used for things like that. So I think it's a good conversation to have.
Exactly, I mean, right, we could, we could then take the typical $20,000 and give it to the tourism board to do something like the projects that exist.
Right, right.
Yes.
And we've also had this discussion and talking about just even creating a pot for, like, signs for the streets or, you know, excuse me, crosswalks and things of that nature just so when, because there's always an issue every year about the funding for it and the delay for it. So if we have that money there, it shouldn't need too much of this.
Right, but, right, exactly, but it's, again, not to designate it for anything specific at the time it comes in, but yes. Bill, do you want to say something?
The first one is, when you said we'll go to the council, I'm assuming you're saying it would be an independent line item that would be put in the budget? Or it's just going to go into the general fund?
It would be in the general line.
Okay.
But it would be, I think, you know, we'll have to confirm it with Heather, but my understanding is she can have a line item in the budget from the revenue side, so that it's transparent that that's the money that's coming in.
So then my question.
Similar to mortgage tax revenue or something.
I'm sorry. So my question would be, are you guys gonna have a mechanism or some kind of process laid out so where outside agencies could submit applications or things of that nature? And my other point is, when we're talking about tourism, oftentimes, we're talking about Warren Street, but I think we should look at some of our disproportionate, you know, kept neighborhoods and start thinking about how we're gonna bring them up as far as beautification and things of that nature as well with some of these funds.
So what that means is, I think the council's a better forum for that.
I agree.
Yeah. I'm sorry, what did I, you finished, Bill? Calvin?
How does affect the county proposal that was at the legal committee with their tourism?
That's a, that's.
Well, that's, we have to.
Completely separate.
It's a separate issue, and that would be if they decide, if they're deciding to, we have to discuss this, certainly, but if the county does decide to levy an additional tax, they'll have their own 4% lodging tax, so we have to discuss if we're gonna sign onto that effort or have a carve-out for the city in terms of how that tax relates to the one where we're charging. So we're not in a, you know, I think this is going to marry more discussion in the legal committee before it comes to. legal committee before it comes to the full council.
And as any of you who are at the legal committee will know, that's a hot topic.
Yeah, so we really have to get a sense of how it would impact the city financially.
And whether we want to buy in or carve out and not add on another 4%.
To the people who are already doing Airbnb.
Well, yes, Peter?
Sorry, I'm still not clear how the fund would work. It would be, it would not be part. So it would just, so the money would be, just the determination would be made by the BEA like any other money going into the general fund?
Yes, with the council approving, yeah.
So it would be, it would be like just eliminating the set aside, basically?
Yeah, that's what it is.
So, okay, thank you.
If I may, if it's set up like the contingency fund is, in order for the council to spend out of contingency, there has to be a resolution taking the money out of there for this purpose and putting it in an account to spend it.
Anything else the council would like to bring up tonight? Anything from the audience? We have plenty of time. The UVA game doesn't start until nine. I guess that's it, then.
I would like to talk to Alderman Volo after the meeting about these electric car charging stations, just to.
It'd be great for everyone, for people visiting, people who are renters, anyone can use them. So they'll be a good asset to the city. Like I said, now, the grant money is there in six months, and now it's not going to be there. So if we're going to do it, we're going to do it now.
I mean, whoever charges, do they have to pay for it, or is it free?
It's $1.75 an hour.
So how are they going to pay this, if there's going to be?
It's, it usually doesn't happen, and you can use your phone and things like that.
Do we have a lot of electric cars?
What's that?
Hope to have more and more.
I mean, in
I mean, we should be removing.
Yeah, in three or five years, this grant money won't be there, and more and more people are getting electric cars, I think, as we go on.
It's the fastest growing segment of the auto market.
This also falls into the smart climate.
Right, right. I mean, I do think that in 15 years, gas stations are going to be like blockbuster videos today that we just won't see them anymore, so.
They'll privilege electric cars.
Yeah.
Are they going to cause less accidents on the road, or is it about the same?
The same?
As far as like car accidents on the road, is it creating less, or is it about the same?
I think it's, I mean, these are auto-driving cars per se, but this is, yeah, you're just not using gas.
They're a lot quieter.
Yeah. But like I said, people who are renting also will be able to use them because they won't necessarily be able to set up an electric car charging port, you know, at their apartment. And that, once we set them up, there's, you know, there's these apps that will tell people where the car charging ports are, so they can park there, they can go have lunch, they can go, you know, for an hour or so, stop on their way, and then, so it's a boom for, like I said, the city will actually reap the benefits of the fees as well as people stopping and, you know.
How long is the car charged for?
It's a medium-speed charger, so take a couple hours.
Yeah, but, you know, maybe you just need a little bit of charge to get to your next location.
This is so cute. It puts me in mind of the cars that you would buy for your kids, you know.
There's already a charging station at the Wick, and there's one at Cole's, and there's one at the Basilica.
And these are your, yeah, these are your standard chargers. So there's a Tesla charger, and there's a standard charger, but the Teslas come with adapters as well, so people can use both.
Okay, Alderman, please come and sign your resolutions. Oh, sorry, meeting's closed.
Tell him excited about the game.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Second?
On Thursday, actually. Alderman, please line up. Line up.